May I get a motion that we discuss only the items discussed in closed session regarding Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one little A one, two items, personnel matter concerning appointments to boards and commissions, and discussions of prospective candidates for employment. Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one little A three, one item, acquisition disposition of publicly owned real property. And Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one little A seven, two items, consultation with legal counsel concerning potential or actual litigation regarding a zoning violation and code violation.
So, so moved?
Second. And may I get a roll call please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn. Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Now, if everyone will stand for the pledge allegiance, um, Councilman Don Williams, and follow that invitation back, Councilman East.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, please guide us as we conduct the business of our town and grant us wisdom in all matters. We ask that you would continue to bless each of us here tonight, and please bless our community. In your name we pray, amen.
All right, I need a motion to modify the agenda as follows, for the addition of two items under new business. Item twelve D, resolution twenty twenty dash three seven, appointing Jordan Witt as town representative to Pulaski on Main. And item twelve E, resolution twenty twenty dash three eight, nominating Barry Hill for reappointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. May I have a motion to modify the agenda by adding these items?
So moved.
And may I get a roll call, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
All right, so, except for our guests and visitors tonight, I'd like to welcome all of you. Then we'll go move on to the public comment period. Got one for Amanda Martin.
Hi there. All right. So, we've spoke with Ms. Virchum, and we're working on two different.
Please, please, please state your name and your address.
Oh, Amanda Martin. Eleven oh one Lindwood Street, Pulaski. Um, so we're working on the two different scenarios. We are here today to see if we could give you guys some information about the property and the land. Um, and see if you guys could look over it and maybe have a vote on it after you guys have time to do that. Um, like measurements, uh, different ways we can put a driveway in and stuff like that. I don't know.
Any disposition of real estate requires having a public hearing, which we need to advertise ahead of time. I don't think we have any problem receiving through Ms. Virchum any of your proposals as far as like how you have it worked out or any of that stuff. And then she can make sure that it has a sufficient, well, you know, we can only say yes or no.
Right.
I mean, basically, so she, if you can work with her to come up with, you know, make sure that it covers, checks all the boxes that we need to have checked as far as, you know, measurements and all that kind of stuff, that would be something that then we can provide you with an answer for. Does that make sense?
Somewhat, yeah.
I mean, i- i- in essence, you're asking us to sell you a piece of property.
Right.
Right?
And consider, yeah.
Right, well, no, the thing is, we can't, we can't answer, we can't answer a question about whether or not we might sell you a piece of property. We can only as a, as a legislative body either sell you something or not sell you something.
Right.
You know what I mean?
I get what you mean.
Like, so what you need to provide us with is what is it that you want us to sell you?
Yeah, that's what I have.
Okay, well, and I, and I think, and that's great, uh, and if you'd like to provide us with, you know, the basics of that information. But in order for us to have a vote on it procedurally and as, as like state statute requires, we need to sort of have, we'd go through that process because it's real estate. If it was a car or something, it'd be a different story, but because real estate, there's very specific requirements in the state code. Doesn't matter who you were asking, if you wanted to buy a square foot of, of land, we'd have to go through the same process. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, and then also I was gonna, sorry, give you guys, um, a petition with some signatures and comments and stuff like that from the town citizens, I guess, for you guys to look over. Okay. That's all.
Mr. Ray, I want to ask, you said two options. You're pursuing two different options, is that what you said?
Right.
Are you able to share anything about the second option at this point?
For if we want to purchase the land or if we were to have to still move. Because I have information on both.
Yeah, and I think that, and that's why I'm.
Yeah, if you don't mind sharing that with us, I think we'd all, we'd all.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they want to hear that.
I know we can't, we can't vote on it tonight, but we're happy to hear it and see where you're at so that we under, that way we can evaluate.
I've never been through this before.
No, no, I understand, that's why I was trying to help you understand.
Right, yeah.
Why we can't sort of have a vote tonight.
Well, I, I didn't expect you to vote tonight.
Okay.
I assumed it would take time and.
Okay.
Think other things like that, but, um, so we've measured the house and what we feel like would be a good reasonable area. If you were to allow us to purchase, if we're not able to purchase, we have one place in town that we've looked at. It would be for rent though, it wouldn't be for purchase, so we've kind of moved on to two other properties in the county. And as far as like time wise, we haven't really gotten a specific time on like how long it would take to even get it moved because we don't know like what all would have to be done, like if a septic and all that has to be on one of the properties. One of them has none of it, so we're still looking at other options as far as that goes.
Ms. Ms. Martin, we had one, there was one primary concern, and that was, um, the entrance to this property that you're interested in proposing or proposing to, to purchase, uh, that runs through the eleven acre plot of land. Are you pursuing options?
We have.
And ways to get into that property?
We have, um.
In a different, different location?
I spoke with Greg Nash, he owns the property that is connected to the land from behind the house. Um, and he is speaking with the LLC that actually owns it. And he says he feels like he would be able to let us put a driveway in from that side of the land so that we wouldn't have to use the existing driveway. And I have like a little drawing if you want to see.
Sure, so any information that we would certainly like to see.
So, quick, Smart, when you was up here a couple of months ago, I know that we told you, the very last time we told you, you need to keep in contact with Ms. Virch, as best you can, to let us know where you're staying. Okay, not saying nothing, we're assuming you're not, you know, do, you need to stay in contact with her the best you can with whatever information you have.
I have been.
We, we, we're, we're gonna work with you.
Right.
But if we don't hear anything out of.
I've been given information.
Well, I think I told you that I needed something by last Friday to send out to the council so they can be prepared to talk more about what you're proposing at tonight's meeting.
Right.
It sounds like you have some of that information, but the council's not in a position tonight to really say anything because they haven't had the benefit of looking at. So you need to provide me as soon as possible copies of whatever you have. I had suggested, you know, that you give us possibly a timeline, where you are looking, who you talk to, that kind of thing. I will see that the council gets it right away so that they'll be in a better position to react the next time you or someone else wants to speak to the issue. But you and I have not had any communications since Friday, a week ago, it'll be two weeks this coming Friday. And I told you, you could call me, email me, or bring me something, so you do need.
How often do you want me to contact you about it? Just as it comes, information as I.
Well, I told you a week ago Friday to bring me something by last Friday. So on a weekly basis would be fine, but we missed the first week, so you need to kind of, in my words, play catch up. Get me what you have tonight.
I have it right here for you.
You said you had it with you tonight, so if you'd like to give it to her, that would be great.
I will.
I will see that the council gets copies of everything that you provide me, okay?
All right.
Probably help you a little bit, yes, I think it's, uh, Councilor Reese said, if you get you a checklist, and you start checking off stuff, and she can start checking off stuff, and we'll, we'll know where you're at.
So that we're on the same base, page and everything?
Okay.
All right.
I do, I do think it's important, as, um, Councilman Reese was saying, is, you, as you guys, the one, one aspect of the tract was pursuing whether it was possible to purchase any, you know, any aspect of that land. Having access to that land is pertinent to that proposal, so, you know, the, it has to go hand in hand with it in, in this conversation from everything that's been discussed. And so it sounds like you're pursuing that, but it would be impossible to actually pursue that option without having access to that land. So that's a very critical, in my opinion, just a critical piece in that, in that conversation in order for there to be any type of, you know, it would be impossible to even look at that proposal without.
Without that.
Without confirmation, you know, this absolutely, you know, is, is possible. You know, from those, so I, I, you know, hopefully that was related enough to where, you know, you guys understand that as well.
We, we know, yeah.
In order, in order to, you know, hopefully figure something out, so.
And also, Ms. Martin, in, in case you haven't, I would seriously suggest getting in touch with a surveyor now, even if you're not, even if it doesn't turn out you're gonna need one, you, if, if we have, if we're gonna have to sell you a piece of property out of one larger parcel, we're gonna have, and, and even if you're gonna get that driveway in, you're really gonna need it to get surveyed. And I know that the surveyors around here are very busy right now, and so the sooner you get on somebody's, you know, you know, list, you'll be better off, and that's one of those things where you can really, that's the kind of thing that we can really vote on, is if you come in and you say, well, and you talk to Ms. Virchum, and she says, well, we can adjust that and go back and forth and figure out where those, that is, and that's gonna be the real, and whether, and that's whether you are at this property or another property, you're gonna probably have to go through that process, um, if you're not buying a whole parcel that's already been surveyed relatively recently. So that's something I would just, just out of, you know, kind of be helpful.
Yeah. I, I thought I had to ask her about that.
Well, I told you that you needed to bring to the council what land you were proposing you to purchase. And the council would have, in my judgment, would have to say yea or nay, we're agreeable to this amount before you hire a surveyor to actually then do the plat and give you an appraisal, because you said something about contacting a realtor as well. Because you also in that meeting initially said you wanted the property that included that building that the town owns.
Right.
Uh, that used to be used for storage of equipment and stuff, and I told you I did not think the council would be agreeable to that.
Right.
And that what you needed to do was either with a drawing or taking pictures, say, we'd like this much land on the left of the trailer, this much on the right of the trailer, this much in front of the trailer, that the council see that. And then if they said, yeah, this seems reasonable, then you could have it surveyed, but I think what Mr. Reese is saying is the surveyors are so busy right now, you may want to get on a list to say, in the next, I'm making this up, six weeks or eight weeks, we may need something surveyed, so they're, you're on the list, otherwise, you know, that could be in the way. But I do think if you could tell us the properties you're looking at, you know, not necessarily the addresses, but what, what's gonna be needed there. You just mentioned one of them might need septic or something, well, that takes time to install, so that would be a part of the, the time period. And the council, I think, has said repeatedly that they are willing to work with you on the timing of these options if they know what you're doing and how you're going about it. But to hear nothing leads them to unfortunately believe nothing is happening, and we, we know that's not the case, but that's why you need to have regular communication.
Thank you for bringing in, Mr. Brown.
I have all that right here, okay? I'll give it to you now or before we leave or.
If you want to stay around, we're, I'll be here another hour, otherwise you can just leave it and I'll copy it and get it back to you tomorrow, or you can come in, whichever works best for you.
I'll give it all up for you.
All right, I don't think there's anyone else, so, we need a, a motion, um, to consider the October twentieth, twenty twenty, council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
And, I'll. New business, so, agency on aging appointments, resolution twenty twenty dash thirty six.
If there's no, no discussion, I'm good that we adopt resolution twenty twenty dash thirty six to throw in.
May I get a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
East.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
And then the naming of streets in the town, um, the session with what's named.
Now, this is my fault that it's on the agenda, because I asked, I, I, as, um, as some of the work I'm doing with the T.G. Howard Center and the county school on their, uh, Virginia Outdoor Foundation grants, they'd asked, there'd been some mention that that street had been renamed, and somebody had asked me, um, if that had happened, and I said, well, I know that there had been some discussion about it, but I didn't know what happened, so I asked David, just what, I, I couldn't find the meeting minutes on the website, so I just asked him to, to research. We did, uh, far more research than I had anticipated, um, but he, he brought up a very good point, which is that the, um, the streets, we don't have a naming of streets ordinance, um, and as those of you who've read the materials, now, we're empowered to, we're empowered to name the streets by, um, by, uh, state statute, um, one of the few times we get very clear, uh, delegation of power. But we don't have an ordinance, and I think, um, for na, we, we have had a practice of naming streets with, you know, when there's been new development, but, um, there is something to be said for having an ordinance for how we name and rename streets. Um, and I think the, uh, not that I intended to make more work for him, but, uh, I, I do think it's probably something that we should, um, have an ordinance about how, just how we do it, you know, does it go to the planning commission? Do we vote on it? Do we, how do we go about doing that? Um, and I think that, you know, there is something to be said for, and I don't know if, if Ms. Virchum has any insight into how other communities have handled this, but, um, I know we have several examples from other communities, um, and so, I don't know what your thoughts are on it, Ms. Virchum.
Yes, of course.
Actually, um, a number of localities not only have a street naming policy, but they have a building slash facility naming policy as well, uh, because it, on occasion will come up where somebody wants to designate a room, a building, you know, uh, after someone who's made a significant contribution, uh, to the community. Um, and I do, and Dave talked with me about this, and I actually think prompted him to start doing survey work so we could see what other communities were doing, because I don't believe in reinventing the wheel if somebody's already, uh, done it. And, um, I was particularly impressed with the Radford ordinance because it seemed to have a lot of detail. I don't think we want you to necessarily tonight to pick one, uh, or maybe if you could give us some guidance, then we could have Spencer draft, um, an appropriate ordinance for your review in the future. But I think absent a policy, we do have the opportunity for things to fall through the cracks as this particular one did, and the fact that we have not evidently in a consistent way, um, had the naming done by one entity. Clearly from the survey work, uh, the majority are in fact named by the governing body, but they may go through a public input process or even solicit, you know, names, uh, from individuals if they're na, you know, interested in naming, uh, something. But I do think the more you can put into policy, the clearer it will be in the future and the less confusion for folks.
The, uh, I, I will say, it seemed, it seemed to me, and there's a lot of good information there, uh, Mr. Q. It's, I agree, the Radford was by far the most involved. Blacksburg, I think, touched on, they touched on a lot of the highlights. It, it looked to me like a number of the other, um, localities kind of were, are, are where we are, and it was just not a, if it wasn't nailed down completely.
But it looked like at least a number of them had some made some statement about who would do it. They may not have gone to the extent of formalizing, you know, in an ordinance or written policy, but they seem to be clearer about who's responsible than perhaps we have been in the past. And so that's why I thought, you know, um, Mr. Reese bringing this up was a good idea. Now, obviously, if we were to be fortunate enough to have a new subdivision come into the area, then the developer would submit as part of his or her plans for the development, you know, proposed, uh, street names. Dave and I were talking, if, uh, in the future, uh, there were, you know, any type of annexation, we might be acquiring properties that have similar names or the same names as we have in the town on certain streets, and then that's something that obviously has to be addressed. So I do think having a policy, um, is a good idea. So whatever prompted, uh, the research, I think, uh, it will help us in the future, it's just a question of how detailed or comfortable you all are about policy.
I got the policy, and I don't have any policy, but I want to ask, um, some, uh, like, uh, this guy's from a riding spinoff. Well, we was talking about the, the name road, naming the road the first time when Mr. Smithin was up here, wasn't there something to do with VDOT? About the naming that thing that Sean was, or the other, manager was saying that we had to get clearance from VDOT, or, do you guys remember anything about that?
I, I don't.
Have you ever talked about another road?
I, I don't recall. I'll say that, no, it wasn't.
Is that, is that like a VDOT road through there that is funded that?
You are responsible for the maintenance, and I keep, uh, roads in the town, so the naming on them is clearly a responsibility of the town. You just need to definitely make who's involved. I, I would tell you that naming maybe portions of a street, you know, if you have a consistent street that, you, I'll use the example of Maine. Um, you know, usually that street would run from one intersection defined to another, so you wouldn't have a block in the middle, for example, that might have a different name, because that could be very, very confusing, uh, to someone. But as far as any streets in the town, you have the authority to name.
So, in, in regards to come back, I know it came up because of the county school project, and we as a council had agreed previously that we were, we were comfortable with the, the net renaming of that street to.
Corbin Harmon.
Corbin, Corbin Harmon, yeah. Yeah, so do we need to back up now, basically, get a policy in place and then use that policy to set that street name?
I, I think we can, we can, I think we think we're empowered to vote on it. I think this as a matter of good practice, it would be a good idea if we impose an ordinance, um, for future changes, since we, you know, I mean, I think we could say that, you know, we've clearly done things in the past differently, and, but I think going forward, now that we are aware of this issue, I think that's what Ms. Virch was trying to say, is that we should have, you know, a policy for new streets, we should have a policy for renaming potentially streets, um, and then have a policy where if there's potential conflicts, how we would handle that. Um, you know, if there was a two pine streets suddenly in town.
Did we formally, I, I don't recall, did we formally vote on that name change?
No, and that's the problem.
Okay, I don't think we did.
So, I think you stood because you had the discussion, and I think you all at the time, from what Dave had shared with me, intended for that to happen, no one brought forward the required action for you all. So I would not think it would be a problem for you all to go ahead and publicly take, you know, a vote to make that change.
I think so.
And then if you're interested, ask the staff to prepare, um, a draft ordinance for your consideration for future use. But I don't know that we need to hold off on this one because it's had a discussion in the past that obviously had the council's support, although there may have been a few different people on council at that time, but I don't seem to be hearing objections at this time.
So no one minds, I'll make, I'll make the motion that we, uh, I think we should do it as specific as we can. So it would be the, um, the portion of what it, well, I guess it's Magnox Drive, which runs from, which is the extension of West Main Street from Randolph to Magna Dean Street, was that consistent with everybody else's recollection?
Yeah.
Um, would be, which was previously renamed Magnox Drive, but would be renamed Corbin Harmon, that's C O, C O R B I N dash H A R M O N. And it does, uh, is that clear enough, David?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Is that a motion?
That was a motion, yes, a very long-winded motion, but yes, sir.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
And then holiday activities.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, um, and members of council, um, this year has been a different year for all of us, uh, that's for sure, and yet holidays keep coming up and special activities keep being discussed. Um, and very recently, um, I've had a discussion with the mayor as well as staff members about what has been the practices of the town as it pertains particularly to the Christmas holiday. And as I understand it, um, in the past, there has been a luncheon, uh, that was paid for by the town, and that if individuals attended the luncheon, uh, then they could take the rest of the day off after the luncheon, uh, which, uh, in my mind meant that we effectively closed town hall and other offices for the afternoon, which didn't seem to be, uh, to be very practical. So, um, what I would, uh, suggest to you all for this coming holiday season is that, number one, we not have, uh, the holiday luncheon, because that brings too many people together, um, in this COVID situation, and a lot of people, I understand, came just so they could have a half a day off. I do think the half a day off is a very nice, uh, gesture. Uh, what I would suggest is that each employee be allowed that half a day between December the tenth and December the twenty second. That way the supervisors could scatter those times so that we could be fully covered. It's a time of the year when people are taking vacations anyway, so we'd want to be able to manage that time. But then they would be allowed to do that, and then as I understand it, at each of these luncheons in the past, they have done the service award recognitions for those employees who've hit five, ten, fifteen, twenty-five, thirty years. Um, and I would like the council to consider either having a special meeting or perhaps coming in an hour early, uh, on one of your meetings, and have that recognition to occur in one of your public meetings as opposed to, uh, that informal luncheon. Uh, it would be obviously broadcast through, um, our Facebook so that the public would hear and see how many employees you have uh, who have given many, many years of service, uh, to the community, and they would have an opportunity to see that recognition. And I think it would mean so much more to those employees to have that done in that manner. Um, and so those are my suggestions as we try to move forward, uh, toward the holidays, that we modify it this year in light of both COVID, our monetary situation, and, uh, trying to find perhaps some, a better way to lift up these individuals who have been giving many, many years of service. who have been giving many, many years of service to the town.
May I get a motion that we would adopt that?
I don't know if, uh, you need a motion on that or...
I think we would be particularly for that half-day issue because I'm not sure how that's been handled in the past. But technically, the council is the one that's responsible for declaring, you know, holidays or how we establish them, in this case, we, we take the state holidays. Uh, but I think just to make it clean, if you all could at a minimum do that. And we can always decide at a later date, um, because we have November and December. But perhaps, um, in order to get maximum participation, I was thinking if we had, um, have come to say an afternoon meeting, maybe even the one, the second meeting of this month, those that are going to get the awards and have, because you all normally come in, uh, for that second meeting at five, but maybe if you came in at four-thirty or something, that people would stay over, we could do that, um, and we could then publicize it.
So the motion would be a motion to grant a floating half-day holiday to all employees, um, between, well, at, at, at the manager's discretion in December. Um, and, uh, also that we would reschedule one of our meetings to provide a, uh, recognition of our long-term employees, um, at one of our, maybe, well, we'll, we can figure out when the meeting is, but that will, we'll do that in an appropriate time.
Second. And may I get a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
If, if I may add, Mr. Mayor, I have one question regarding the, uh, the ordinance on the street naming. Did you need a motion for that? Do we all agree?
I think if you all agree that you would like one prepared, we'll try to get one out to you all in plenty of time where you look at it, consider it. We can even take multiple meetings if there's a discussion, maybe have it ready for you, uh, for your work session, uh, the next time. And then after you all have tweaked it, because I'm sure there'll be some changes, then we could put it on in your meeting in December. I don't know of any pending requests at this moment. So I think we got plenty of time, particularly now that you handled that.
I'm getting a grab currently and preparatory. I mean, you're, you're three steps ahead of us.
Of course you are. Sounds good. And then the next part of, uh, next one is twelve D, the resolution twenty twenty dash three-seven, appointing Jordan Witt as town representative for Blackie on Main.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-seven as written.
Second.
And may I get a roll call for that one, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
If you get them all through, it's too late now.
I've been serving there.
We would very agreeable.
And then our next one is item twelve E, resolution twenty twenty dash three-eight, nominating Barry Hill for reappointment to the Board of Exemining Appeals.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-eight, a resolution nominating Barry Hill for reappointment to the Board of Exemining Appeals as written.
And may I get a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Now we'll move on to the manager's report.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I did put, um, at each of your faces, uh, earlier this evening, um, this brochure that I had, uh, Jordan develop, um, and, uh, was reminded, uh, that it was still in progress when I got an email from the mayor about a concern that a citizen didn't know when they moved into town that they had a responsibility to purchase a decal. Um, so we have prepared this, we're going to be putting it on heavier stock paper, but it will be distributed out of the finance office whenever a new water service, uh, or a transferred water service. It, because we do have some people who move around within the town. They will be given one of these brochures as the reminder of the various places that they may need to contact, whether it's schools or, uh, service providers and the actual dates that things are due to the town. And we're hoping that this will minimize some of the concerns that we have heard recently, you know, from citizens. But I wanted you all to kind of get an advanced copy. We're going to be putting it on a slightly heavier paper stock. So it will, um, weather time a little bit better than these. But I wanted you all to have an opportunity to see what was in the works. And then in talking with our auditors who are in today, which is why you all had your closed session in a different, uh, room in the building, um, they have indicated to, uh, both Rebecca and I that the U-DAG loan fund has been in existence for so long that there actually is no paperwork, no paper trail about, um, the history of it. It sits, um, as part of the restricted fund balance of the town as opposed to potentially being identified as unrestricted. And in talking with the auditors, uh, we are comfortable with recommending to you all that you take an action that would identify that we want to, and these are the terms that they used, uh, clear up an internal balance in our fund balance of a million dollars. The current U-DAG amount, uh, or liability, and it serves as a liability on the restricted side. Uh, we currently have one point two-two million. So if we cleared off a million of that, we'd still have a little over two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. And the funds that we get back on roof loans, um, on a couple of the other loans that we've given out would go into the U-DAG fund. But we see no need to carry a balance in excess of a million dollars that we know we have no intention of repaying. So if you all are comfortable with taking action on that tonight, if not, if you want to think about it, I just think it would be prudent for us to handle it, move it back in that way. And it does have the support of the auditors.
Is there, is there any benefit to it other than cleaning up paperwork?
Well, it goes from being a restricted fund of a million to, to an unrestricted, which means that you have greater ability to access the cash if you need it. But it also will help the council in terms of your desire to increase the percentage that we have, um, in the fund balance and would make it available if you had a true emergency. As a restricted amount, you can't use it for any other purpose. If it's in the unrestricted portion of the fund balance, you could access it.
Is it possible to clear up a million-dollar unnecessary amount without making it unrestricted?
No. Not unless you want to repay it. And we have not been repaying and have no, as I can tell, never really even had any intentions when it came many, many years ago, not just to this community, but to a lot of communities. Uh, it was intended, uh, to be available to help economic development kind of activities. It had as a goal, you know, that it would be repaid or replenished as it was used. You know, if you gave a loan to, uh, an organization or an agency with the expectation it would be repaid, it would go back into that fund. In reality, that just hasn't happened. Uh, so the number years ago was much higher, uh, than it is today. Um, and there are, um, no expectations, you know, on anyone's part that that's going to be repaid at any point in the future, so. But again, this, I just learned this today from the auditor, so if you all want to spend some time thinking about it, we'll talk about it in another meeting. I did just want to make you all aware of it. And other than that, those are the only items, Mr. Mayor, that I have for this evening.
Would you all like to discuss it more or would you like to make, make a motion?
I'm comfortable moving it, but if everybody else isn't right now, we don't have it away.
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I was just trying to think through what the motion should be.
Well, is it, is it, so is it a liability, is it like money that we loaned out and that we were supposed to, so it's an internal liability? So it's just, it's merely just, 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 uh, just reconciling that account essentially, right?
Right, and, and it...
And then whatever's the, the positive balance, I mean, whatever's the, there is an actual receivable, which isn't a hundred and eighty-plus days old or whatever, you know, a current receivable is going to stay, would stay in there.
That amount has been carried for years and years and years, something over a million dollars.
Okay.
Um, with, it never really...
Never was written off or anything like that.
So there really wasn't any expectation, but it is being carried on your books as a liability. But what the auditors called it was, um, a change in your internal balancing.
Right.
So that's why it moves from restricted to unrestricted. It's still there, um, but it, it has the ability to be used if you all have a need for it.
You have that figured out, Jim?
Why is everybody looking at us? Go ahead.
Uh, I move that we, um, take the U-DAG, uh, restricted fund balance, um, and internally reconcile it into unrestricted funds as per the recommendations of the auditors. Um, and, um, in the, in the amount, the amount suggested, which is, I believe, one point two-two million dollars?
Only we would unrestrict the other.
Oh, you don't, oh, I see, okay.
And then leave the other as active and restricted.
I see, I see.
And then that would be where we would put back any of these loan repayments.
Yeah, I see, I see.
I see, Jim, in fact.
I'm just going to say, because this is not simple, that it might, we're talking about, perhaps the best thing to do is kind of get the auditors to lay out in writing exactly what they're asking for and maybe you address it at the next meeting, rather than potentially not doing it.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
Just, yeah, just have them lay out what the motion should be and then we can, you can address it if you still desire to do it.
All right. All right. As a reminder, our next council meeting will be November seventeenth, twenty twenty, here in the council works, uh, sessions. Closed session begins at five P.M. Town council chambers, public session begins at six-thirty P.M. If I can get a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
And I'll invite you.
Aye.